And since Governor Stevens got his hand up first. Governor Stevens.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to check with you, Mr. President, and actually with past President Chiketti. Because some of the comments that I'm hearing, I think, will be answered with what we do next. And that really is to establish a structure and an approach for how we will go about. And I don't mean to use structure twice, but how we will go about taking this examination and coming with some ideas to report back to the court. And as I said before, one, I believe that's going to be a process, or at least I'm supportive of a process that is as transparent as possible and inclusive as possible and in broad ranging as possible, both giving everybody the information, as Mr. Nguyen mentioned, you know, on, you know, what the issues are, what the problems are, what the court cases are, et cetera, et cetera. And I know that Tara has a short version of that because she came to the she came to the Equity and Disparity Work Group and made that presentation, as well as, I think, the Access to Justice Board. But it becomes a matter of how do we get all that information out and hear from everybody and really have a rich and robust process in which we take in all manner of comments and suggestions before we even begin to develop you know, the, the recommendation that we're going to make. So and I would hope for this meeting, Mr. President, because I hear Ms. Hawkins very well. I would hope that unless absolutely necessary, and that is to me, going into an executive session because our general counsel needs to speak to us, I would hope we won't go into executive session and really try not to do that on an ongoing basis unless you are advised upfront that we actually need to do that. So those are my comments.
So I'm starting to see some hands up. Rex Nolte, you get your hand up? Can't hear you.
On a technical piece, before we get too far from public comment, I want the folks on the phone to know that it is star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. We do have some folks on the phone. So if you're on the phone and you have a comment or question, the appropriate time, star nine to raise your hand, star six to mute and unmute. Just want to make sure that those folks were acknowledged.
Thank you very much for doing that. Appreciate it. Okay. Past President Chiketti.
Thank you, President Tolleson. I'd just like to say that I've been encouraged by the discussion that we've had today by, by everyone. It aligns a lot with what I had in mind for our process. When the Chief Justice talked about, you know, one option being do nothing and wait until the Supreme Court orders us to do something and then we scramble. That's what I want to avoid. I'm not, my proposal, it's in the materials, is not, we need change now. There should be this change. It's a outline of a process by which we get to a conclusion at the end of the process. And the process, in my opinion, is important from my discussions with the chief, discussions with Ms. Hawkins, discussion with, with other people who stakeholders, who want to be a part of this process. There's going, my proposal includes a lot of, of not only just inviting folks in, but soliciting their input, letting them know that this is going on and inviting them to the table to present, not just in three-minute intervals, but as presenters over the course of the next several months. I think having public input, access to justice input, the sections input. There's a lot of people out there that are, would be affected by this and, you know, are, and I've said this before. I think it's the most important thing that any of you will all be involved in, in trying to decide what we look like in the future. I'm excited about it. It's very important. I think the courts thinks it's very important. I don't think any of us want to be in a position where we have to make rash decisions about what we're going to be. That's what happened with other states. We learned about that through the Structures Work Group. And it's not a good position to be. We need to undertake this now. I can talk a little bit more when we get to the, to the agenda item, but my proposal in the, in the materials is a step-by-step phased approach with a help from some of our staff for a process and a program and a schedule for doing everything that we need to do to evaluate the situation and make best decisions for this organization, not only in light of the litigation, but also, as the chief says, what is in the best interest of the WSBA? Thank you.
All right. Past President Chiketti, we're there now. We are discussing adopt the process for determining WISBA's position regarding the future structure of the bar. So if you wanted to elaborate on your
My proposal?
Your proposal, yes. This is the time.
All right. Well, I would love to. So in your materials, you'll see several different documents. And I'm at the bar offices right now and I don't have my, my documents with me, but there should be the Structures Work Group report. There should also be a example of a meeting notice that came out of the Structures Work Group. And there should also be a, we borrowed some report from the Long Range Strategic Planning Council of what we're doing with regard to looking at the future home of the WSBA. One option, not the option, not the decision, no decisions have been made. But it was one way of getting us from A to Z on trying to consider whether the WSBA should be looking at buying a building or satellite offices, or what we do in December of 2026, when our lease comes due. I offer that as an example of a, of a schedule of steps, certain steps that need to be taken over the course of the next several months. That gives us some structure to this, to this program and guides us in milestones and making sure that we're keeping on, on, on task. I've heard from many of you that deadlines are, are important and I agree. I think we should be doing this over the course of the next several months with an idea of being complete in August or September of next year. I think that would be a good timeline for not only addressing what's out there right now, going back over the Structures Work Group, which is, you know, had a lot of good information, a lot of good presenters testimony. We listened to other states. We should do that again. We should bring everybody up to speed on what what's happened in the past, what we looked at in the past, and then compare that to where we are right now, especially with regard to the litigation. While there is opportunities, I suppose, that we would have to go into executive session if, if absolutely necessary. I hope that does not happen or is minimal. Because again, the process here is public input. By all of us learning together, all of us developing this and all of us coming to a decision where we have as many voices as possible affect us. Because the sections may have a different perspective than the access to justice folks, the public may have a different perspective. All of those folks need to be at the table and, and presenting and, and again, so also oftentimes we'll put a meeting announcement on our WSBA and nobody shows up, but, and we think, well, that's enough. You know, we've told people they could have come if they wanted to. That's not enough. We need to reach out to these folks. And we need to say, this is important. This is not, this is not, this is, could be the most important thing that we do. And it's important for you two, and we want you to come and we want you to talk and we want to learn from your perspective, what's in the best interest of this organization and include that in our decision-making. So I'm, I'm, my intent of putting all of that together in kind of short order was to provide a roadmap for how we could get to that decision. And the process, you know, the ultimate decision, that's up to all of the Board of Governors, not even me. I don't have a vote in, in this. But we need to have a process, in my opinion, and waiting to see what the Supreme Court does and then having a few days to, to react to it, I think would be a disaster. So I'm hoping that if my proposal isn't the one, one very similar to it that gets us to that is the one, and that we take that opportunity and we, we more proactive in this and not just sitting and waiting and see, waiting to see.
Okay, I have, thank you, past President Chiketti. I have Governor Peterson followed by Governor Higginson, followed by Governor Boyd, followed by Governor Perzer.
Thank you. Thank you, President Tolleson. Um, you know, and I guess, I know I've been saying this for a while now that we need to, we need to get input from our members and I think that is critical. I'll always believe that's critical, but we're going to have to give them, you know, if we want input from the members and meaningful input from the members, we're going to have to give them not a position, but information, right? So I mean, we're going to have to give them information as to what's going on and and what they need to be thinking about. Otherwise, the feedback we get back won't be helpful. You know, you know, of course, I think we need to have a process and I, and so I agree with them. Past President Chiketti, we need, obviously need a process. And I guess part of the frustrating, this is nobody's fault, right? But the frustrating part of this, because I think we've been talking about, well, what process do we need for, I don't know, six months now or nine months, or I'm not sure how long. So I mean, I, you know, obviously we need to get something out to the members, get their feedback, get some sort of process in place. You know, my personal opinion is I don't think that the legal landscape justifies any change. You know, maybe a higher degree of vigilance or, you know, higher sensitivity to what we're doing. That's, that's obviously important, but I don't. I personally don't think the current law requires a change. So we need to be careful when we go out to the members. We're not advocating a position, right? But, you know, part of the problem we're going to have is we go to the members is when we present the law to them, they're going to be like, well, why are we even talking about this? I, I've now looked at what you presented to us and doesn't indicate that we need to have any change. What, you know, why, why are you wasting my time with this? Where, you know, some will be grateful, some won't be grateful. So anyway, I think we're just going to be careful because it is, um, you know, it's potentially a, a political powder keg and, you know, once you, once you take the top off the cane, typically can't put it back on. So thank you.
Thank you, Governor Peterson. Governor, Governor Higginson.
I'd like to yield to Governor Perzer and then be called on after he speaks.
Well, I have Governor Boyd in the middle there. Is that okay if Governor Boyd goes?
But can we just reverse, I'm sorry, was Governor Perzer after Governor Boyd?
Yes.
Okay.
Go up, you're, you're muted yourself.
Okay. Uh, I, I'd like to make a motion then, that the current bar structure remain unchanged and that consideration of any different structure be deferred until after the Supreme Court has issued a ruling on McDonald and Shell cases. And if there is a second to my motion, I'd like to speak to it. If there isn't, I'd like to just speak anyway.
I'm going to second the motion, but I also want to speak to it as well.
So then if I may.
Governor Higginson.
If I may speak to my motion. It seems to me that we've got several different things that have been tossed out for consideration today. Several are beyond what I thought today's meeting was about. Today, we were supposed to be considering whether we, a process for possible restructuring. And then we've now heard that, that the court thinks we should be looking at whether the current structure is the best structure to serve the public and the members. Just perhaps a, a good question to ask, but it wasn't part of what I understood was on today's agenda. And I think that's a topic that really bears a lot more discussion and consideration before we would know even how to respond to that. And then and then the other question that was thrown out was, should we have a review of the structure regardless of what the Supreme Court might do? So that, because periodically it's a good idea to review structure is what I think I understood. Part of the Chief Justice's remarks to be, again, that may be a very good thing for an organization to do from time to time. But in a sense, we did that two years ago with the Structures Work Group, which the court commissioned. And that's only two years old and there is, well, I, I acknowledge that there have been several other cases that are wending their way up now to the Supreme Court. We, as of yet, don't have even an indication that the court will accept review, much less if they do, what they'll do with those cases. So at the moment, I, I suggest that we have nothing before us that would mandate a, a scramble to take a look at our structure. And we'll say that I, that if, if the court accepts review and if the court finds that mandatory bars are, are not valid for various reasons, the, I don't think that we will have to scramble to do something different with our organization. I don't, the entire country will be then left in a position of responding to whatever the court does. And I don't see how it would be that we would, the next day, have to make some response to whatever the court might do. Like, I don't think that by failing to do something right now, we put ourselves in a position of having to make a quick decision in a year or two or three, whenever the court gets to, if they accept review and if they make a decision. So I don't think that that should be the reason that we act today on, on moving forward with a review of the structure. Think it should be a separate discussion about whether we should review the structure, not in light of pending cases, but just in light of the questions of, is this the best way to, to deliver services to our members? So I'm, I am speaking therefore in favor of leaving the status quo in place in terms of the current bar structure. I don't, I, Nancy Hawkins sent an excellent memo out to us this morning that I found very compelling. And when she pointed out many, many important things about how the sections and our, our members, whether they're part of the sections or not. They, right now, we're tossing things out that may or may not even come to pass and we don't have a unified presentation. And we couldn't because we don't know right now what we might need to do to respond to a Supreme Court decision. So we're just premature. We got a lot of comments two years ago, which went to the Structures Work Group and that came through the Board of Governors. A lot of members were at that point very engaged and they, my recollection is the vast majority said, don't make any changes. So if we now go alarm our members by saying, well, we're kind of just thinking, maybe the court will do something and we probably should come up with a contingency plan. I think that that, I think that that's an alarmist approach that doesn't serve our members well, well, busy attorneys. If we get people riled up and we don't even know for sure what we're asking them to think about, that's not helpful. So with all, with all due respect to my colleagues who have a different view, I am asking you to consider supporting this motion that the current bar structure remain unchanged and that the consideration of any different structure be deferred until after the Supreme Court has issued a ruling on the McDonald and the Shell cases. Thank you.
So before we move forward, if I could have Governor Higginson just state your motion one more time so everybody's real clear on what it is.
Um, yes, and I, and I've written it out too, so I can email it to Tara. I move that the current bar structure remain unchanged and that the, and that consideration of any different structure be deferred until after the Supreme Court has issued a ruling on the McDonald and the Shell cases.
Any, any what now? Any?
Issued a ruling on the McDonald.
No. And the consideration of, and consideration of any.
You want me to read it again?
Just that part, that word.
That consideration of any different structure.
A different structure, okay.
Be deferred until after the Supreme Court has issued a ruling on the McDonald and Shell cases. Of course, I mean, the US Supreme Court.
Okay. Okay, well, we've lots of hands up. I think Governor Boyd had her hand up next.
Thank you, President Tolleson. I originally was going to speak to something else, so I would ask Mr. President, if after we take this vote, if it determines to be a no vote, if I could be next in line then. But I would like to speak to this motion. I do oppose this motion. I don't think that it is responsive to what the Supreme Court and Chief Justice Gonzalez is asking of us. I think that it would be prudent to respond in a way that that specifically addresses what the court has asked us to look at. I also think it would be prudent to have a contingency plan. The fact of the matter is, is that the Fifth Circuit, I believe, gave Texas 90 days to restructure. I don't think we could restructure in 90 days. I think that that will affect not only everyone's jobs at the bar. I think that'll affect all of the members of the bar, all 40,000 of us and all of the income of the WSBA and the members' money. I, it, it does not make sense to me to sit on our hands and wait until we have to do something and then be forced to restructure in a way that might not be the most efficient or effective structure that's going to cost the members a lot of money to do. I think that it will be cheaper to analyze this now and have a contingency plan in the event that the Supreme Court, that SCOTUS does decide that our structure is unconstitutional. I also think that the Supreme Court Justice Gonzalez is correct. The legal landscape is changing. Frankly, our society's understanding of DEI is changing. I think all of these things do require a new analysis on whether the way that we're operating is the way that we want to continue operating. I understand that a, a large analysis was done just a few short years ago, but the world has changed in a few short years. And I think that as leaders of the bar and as members of the bar, we should want to ensure that we are operating in the most efficient and effective way possible with the input from sections and members of the bar as a whole. So I would, I would oppose this. I think that it's important work that we, we start coming up with a contingency plan now and start evaluating whether our current structure is the most correct structure. So I would ask that this board vote no on the motion and that we proceed with our plan to come up with our contingency plan and the best structure for the bar.
Thank you, Governor Boyd. I'm gonna check and see, I saw that General Counsel Shankland had her hand up. I didn't know if she had some procedural things she wanted to advise us of or if there was something about this motion that she's wanting to chime in on or what.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick clarification that there are actually three cert petition motions before the court. So if you're going to actually name the cases in the motion, the Michigan case, the Taylor case is still pending. That one has the petition, a response and a reply filed, but it is still pending. It is more difficult to find it on the site, but anyway, just, I, I'm assuming the motion meant to include them all. That's it.
Uh, Mr. President, I'll just say, yes, I, if, if the Taylor case is still there and alive, then I, my motion should actually include a reference to the Taylor case as well. Thank you, Julie.
Okay, so Governor Higginson, you'll get an opportunity or Executive Director Neva will give you, give it, get the opportunity to restate the motion at the end of the discussion on the motion. Governor Perzer.
Yes, thank you, President Tolleson. My, my support for the motion is, is really kind of follows. And it kind of mirrors the question I asked Chief Justice Gonzalez is, is how is the report that was generated just two years ago now all of a sudden deficient? And I haven't heard an answer to that question and I'm not sure that you just go and start changing things in, because you believe something might change without having a real basis in fact to make a change. And I, I kind of agree with Brent on this thing and that I'm not sure that, that we can presuppose or guess what any court is going to do, but change for change's sake is really not necessarily beneficial to anybody. So, and I know that both Governor Abel and past President Chiketti were on the, the task force, but again, I guess we need to know what is it that is deficient about that report that needs to be changed? That's one issue. The other is that irrespective of what we do as the bar, the Supreme Court is going to make their own decision. And so if we say the status quo is fine, and then the Supreme Court says it's not fine, then we're going to make a change. And so they're, they may want some input based on what they decide, but, but respectfully, I don't know that we have to change anything at this point in time. The Supreme Court is as mindful of these cases as we are. They will be vigilant, I suppose. But if we say to the Supreme Court that we don't believe that any change is necessary at this point in time, they're going to do something and they may agree with us, they may disagree with us. But there'll be additional guidance coming from the court, but, but I'm not sure that, and I don't call this busy work, but I'm not sure that doing work that was, is based upon speculation is the most prudent use of, of resources at this point in time. So based on that, I would support Governor Higgins's motions.
Thank you, Governor Perzer. I think Governor Clark is next.
I'm sure Brent, thank you. Um, so my question is one that is this, assuming that, that this motion doesn't pass and that this board does create a process, what kind of financial impact will this be and will, will we do it, I mean, through our, our, I mean, we passed a I mean, I, 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 I mean, something where overlook at the amount of the battle cost, what staff will do it? I don't see that being, being done yet. So I don't think today, even if we didn't pass the motion before us, that we can really pass one. Okay. Okay, with that not being done, right? So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, President, Governor Clark. Governor Stevens, I believe you're next.
So you all may remember, I, I mentioned that I've made a shift and my shift is I was long in the camp, let's not do anything, let's keep the association just like it is and do nothing. And I don't know if you all recall, but I want to take you back to last, our last BOG meeting. And at our last BOG meeting, so what I'm talking about is doing nothing leaves sections and a number of other people in a quandary about whether they could do anything. So the business law section, for what I consider to be squarely in the, in the realm of germaneness, we took them through a, a a tussle with some consideration and concern about whether or not them moving forward and making recommendations to the legislature would trigger this exact attack that by somebody who says, you know, I don't think you should be involved in this at all. I don't think anybody should be talking to the legislature about anything. And I don't know if you you recall how much in a quandary the folks in the business law section were. So on the one hand, we say, well, we should do business as usual, but on the other hand, we're not acting like we're doing business as usual. And I'm especially talking about the business law section. And that was an impact for me because of course, you know, I come out of the civil rights law section where we're always struggling with GR 12. But to see something that is, that is, you know, clearly not in the debate, I don't think, about political or social, we still were then wondering whether or not we could allow them allow them to go forward. Now, and I hope she speaks to this as well. I believe I recall a few months ago that Ms. Hawkins was mentioning how the family law section was beginning to pull back on its, its activities in advising various members of the legislature on issues. For these very reasons, for this very circumstance where we're trying to figure out whether or not we expose ourselves to a suit because of people who think we shouldn't be involved in any of those activities at all. So if we do nothing, one of the things I'm concerned about is making sure we're actually saying to sections and everybody else, we will continue to do our business as we have done it. But I am concerned that we're going to be speaking out of the other side of our mouths, because we'll have a heightened level of concern regarding whether or not we're exposing the association to an attack. This is not a good place to be. So I've moved to the place of, I also want to make sure that we have a plan, a contingency plan, if you will, if things go wrong, because I agree with Governor Boyd that if you wait until what looks like a line of cases comes down and then we are flat-footed, we will have less time to actually seriously consider what we ought to do. And by the way, Governor Perzer, I believe that the question you ask about whether or not the prior work was deficient may in fact be one of those questions we should take a look at. We're asked by the court to give them guidance, not the other way around. The court has asked us to take a look at these matters and give them advice. So for us to say, well, let's wait till the court tells us what to do. I mean, I do believe they are genuine when they're saying we see a change in the legal landscape and we'd like WISBA to take a look and advise us. That's what I heard from the court. And I don't think I'm mistaken in what I heard. So I guess the last part, which again, if we have a very robust process, I think it only stands to reason that if we actually come up with a contingency, there may in fact be a question that's then in front of us as well, which is are there reasons why we should make the change now irrespective of the landscape, because we've actually done this work, and I think this work is important? So I would vote no on doing nothing, saying nothing, and just waiting until things go, go awry. And having been a short time to figure out what to do.
Thank you, Governor Stevens. Governor Williams-Roose, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it sounds like we have a general consensus that, number one, in, in answer to Chief Justice Gonzalez's first question is we want to continue doing what we have been doing. Now, there seems to be then this discussion and disagreement regarding the remaining questions that the chief asked us. I came into this meeting with, with some real confusing because having not actually received a formal letter of correspondence from the court with their charge to us, I was just very confused as to exactly what they were looking for. Was there more than just question number one that was presented? And so I was extremely truly, as I said earlier, I was very grateful that the chief was here to deliver his message to us directly. I'm sure, I mean, we've got it on recording, so our minutes can accurately reflect his exact words in the minutes as to what the three questions were. But I, if, you know, again, to reiterate, my question to him was, are we purely insurance underwriters looking at a risk analysis? And this goes to Governor Perzer's question about the 2018 report. And where I would disagree with Governor Perzer is that if there's, if we were in the, the great state of California and a neighborhood a block over from ours was on fire, I wouldn't stay in my house and just hope that my house was protected and wouldn't burn down. I would go outside and make sure that the new regulations about having a hundred-foot fire zone of non-flammable ground cover and all of the other things would be there because I want to make sure that i- i- I can learn that, hey, our neighbors next door, they have the fifty-foot barrier, which had been the recommendation in 2010. But now they're, they're saying that people should have a hundred-foot barrier between their homes or and so that's, that's where I personally am seeing this is, I don't necessarily want to say that the 2018 report is defective. I think that there has been sufficient changes. Mr. Zoll has said there has been a changes from the decision-making landscape of 2018. Is it going to be sufficient to warrant a modification or amendment of that report? I think that's where having the process is is going to be important in that we, we should start and do that. But then again, as the chief blatantly directly answered to my question, it's not just about risk analysis. There are other questions that he wants us to address, including what would be, what, what is the best way of serving our members and other things that up until an hour and twenty-two minutes ago hadn't even crossed my mind as being part of the charge that was coming before us. So as like with Governor Stevens, I came in here today really thinking that a simple motion saying we're maintaining the business as we have been would give the entire association, including the sections, that pathway to moving forward until other decisions from those three pending Supreme Court cases may come down. Governor Higgins, and I might suggest if, you know, one thing about your, your wording was if there was any instruction, but you're assuming that they might take up the case and give us a decision. What if their decision from the court was remand back with instructions? Would that impact your motion at all? Because that's, if I'm understanding and remembering correctly, that's what happened with the Oregon case, is it wasn't actually decided, they cert denied with instructions back to the district court. So that, I don't know if that would change your motion if you wanted to amend it where there was an actual decision from the Supreme Court that would then be binding on the entire country. But that was just a procedural thing that I was thinking about on your, on your motion there, just as a friendly suggestion. But right now, I, I am supporting of the camp that we should be doing something. So even with your friendly amendment, I would be voting no on the second half. But I do believe that we should try and find that common ground, and maybe it's a separate motion that we just move forward on, you know, as, as of the present situation, that we maintain our status quo business as usual, so that way everyone can continue to operate and doing their jobs and our sections can do their work. Because I believe that's critical for us as we go into January. Thank you.
So before Governor Higgins responds, and I want to make sure she has an opportunity to respond. I thought I should go down the list here. I've got Governor Abell, followed by Governor Peterson. Governor Abell.
I can defer to Governor Higgins for purposes of a response, if I may be permitted to speak afterward, Mr. President.
Governor Higgins.
I think if I heard Governor Williams-Roose's suggestion, it would be to change the word ruling in my motion to that consideration of any different structure be deferred until after the Supreme Court has issued a decision on the McDonald and Shell and now Taylor cases. Could I just inquire, was that what, what Governor Williams-Roose was proposing as a possible amendment?
I, I, because I believe that was your intent. If that's not your intent, then, but yeah, I believe that you were actually thinking of a decision from the Supreme Court that's then going to go to everyone's constitutional law textbooks.
My, my intent with the motion was either a ruling or if they don't accept cert, that whatever, whatever they do that, that ends their inquiry on the pending cases. So if they accept review, okay, then we wait till they've actually issued a ruling. If they don't accept review, then they've also ended their interest in those cases and then. So if, if decision would be clearer, I'd be happy to amend, amend my motion to say decision. And I, and I guess I would, I would accept that as a an amendment if my second would accept changing the word ruling to decision.
Governor Perzer.
That's fine.
Okay, so we've got that squared away. Can I get back to Governor Abell now?
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I just want to say that I appreciate the comments from all of the governors. It's obviously an important issue, and I, it's good to hear from folks who you know, are comparatively new on the board weighing in on this. You know, as, as you folks may know, I served on the Bar Structure Work Group a while ago with some other members who were here at the meeting. But it's interesting to hear the perspective of folks who have rolled on the board since then. I also particularly appreciated the comments from, from Governor Perzer, kind of to the effect of, you know, really what has changed or how much has changed since the last Bar Structure Work Group led by the Supreme Court was stood up and issued its work product. There are some more cases. I think frankly, it doesn't do a whole lot to change the analysis. But the fact remains that this is the analysis the court is asking us to do. So you know, with that in mind, I will be opposing the present motion from Governor Higgins. I understand and appreciate the sentiment and perspective behind it, but you know, this is what we're being asked to do, and I believe that what will likely end up happening is that in the course of doing this analysis, we're going to do a broad, inclusive process, hear from everybody. You know, my guess is that we're going to come back on questions one and two by saying it's a guessing game. You know, that's kind of what happened last time. I think that's probably what's going to happen this time. But the far more interesting and I think fruitful area of discussion is this question number three. What do we want? What is affirmatively the best structure for our organization? I'd encourage us to spend our time and attention on that question. And then kind of shifting from that, you know, I've taken a look at past President Chiketti's proposal. I think it's pretty good. I think we can make some amendments to fine-tune it around the three issues that the Chief Justice has given us today. And my personal preference would be to have a fairly tight timeline on this. I'm a little concerned about just reinventing the wheel after we did this two years ago. So those are some of my thoughts with regard to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Was it two or was it three?
These are COVID years. Who knows what time it was? Maybe three years.
The, the, the process was in eighteen, and then the report came out in nineteen.
Early nineteen, right?
Early nineteen.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I attended most of those meetings either, I think, I mean, I, either in person or on or by, you know, doing the our association video stream, but I wasn't a member of the task force. So, okay, back to the folks who want to speak to the motion or against the motion. Governor Peterson.
You know, regarding, regarding the current motion, I mean, I, I get, I definitely like what Governor Higgins has proposed. I guess something that I've been kind of thinking through, and this is maybe a little bit of a hybrid, and I'd be looking for obviously feedback from the other governors, but maybe doing something along the lines of doing a motion for status quo, but then, you know, advise the sections of, you know, some sort of heightened scrutiny that we would be, for take, you know, looking at if, in that particular situation because of the Fifth Circuit case, but then third part would be have WISBA work on a potential contingency plan in the background, just in case something did happen. And the fourth part of the proposal would be to indicate to the members that at least we've tentatively decided to stick with the status quo, but we want feedback and give them information and, you know, look for feedback from the members just to see if the members have changed their opinion. Just as Governor Higgins said, two years ago, they're very much in favor of the current structure. Now, maybe two years from, you know, two years removed, maybe they've changed their opinions, but from a legal standpoint, I don't see any reason to do anything different. So we need to make sure we keep those two issues very clear in terms of a legal issue and desire, I guess, to go back to the members and ask, well, we know you told us two years you like the way it's going, but do you want to do it differently? And I'm fine with that. I'm always fine with input from the members.
Thank you, Governor Peterson. I know that Nancy Hawkins has her hand up, and, and I'm not going to ignore Nancy Hawkins, but I do want to make sure that I get all the governors an opportunity to speak first. And I don't know, are there any governors on the phone? And I was just going to remind the folks, if there's a governor on the phone and anybody on the phone that to raise your hand, you press star nine. And if you want to mute or unmute your phone, you have to press star six. I just want to make sure I got that piece of information out there again. So I believe we've got Governor Higgins, followed by Governor Stevens.
In listening to some of the comments, I I am, I'm struck by what Governor Peterson just said that we do need to really pay a lot of close attention to seeing if the members have changed their minds from two, three years ago. And I know that some of my, our I was one of our younger governors feels that three years ago is a long time and things may have well changed, and it's possible she's right. So what I'm wondering now, I'm not yet moving this as an amendment to, to my motion, but I'm wondering now if if we would consider switching this around so that the tail doesn't wag the dog, if you will. In other words, that the board doesn't drive this, so whatever might happen, so much as asking the members what they think. So if potentially we would generally people support the idea that the current bar structure may not change at this point in time, and then we form a work group to develop questions to ask the members in whatever form that is, whether it's contacting members as a whole, whether it's sections, whether it's binary bar associations, certain other bar associations, whatever it is, and ask them that question that Chief Justice Gonzalez asked us to consider, which is are we serving, do you think we're serving you with the current structure? And do you have any suggestions? If, if the answer is no, we're not, or we could do a better job, what do you suggest? I, I think that Nancy Hawkins has made some excellent points in her memo to us. And, and I really think she's such a tireless and strong advocate for sections, which I greatly respect, because once I'm not sitting here with a governor in front of my name, I will be in the sections again. And I will want sections to be respected and paid attention to by whatever, whoever's on the board at that time. So it seems to me that maybe the way we do this is we just throw this question straight out now. Keep the status quo. And then let's start this process by asking the members, what do you want? And, and then we can decide from there what we do. And that would also pick up Governor Clark's concern that we haven't got a fiscal impact for whatever our proposal might be for today. In, in which we're supposed to do. We, a year ago or so, we passed a motion that as a policy was that whenever we have something in front of us that might cost money, we're supposed to know what the fiscal impact will be so that we can decide, do we have the money, the budget, do we amend the budget or whatever? But we haven't done that too well, but this is something that could potentially cost some money. So I am, I'm just throwing this out for some discussion. And if this is something of interest to people, perhaps someone or, or I could make, could amend my motion to change the second part to say that that, or maybe I add on to it. And in the meantime, we ask the members for their comments and are we serving you with the current structure? And if not, what are your suggestions for how we might change it? So I throw that out for some comment.
Thank you. I, I, right, oh, Governor Stevens, I there, there you are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So I was kind of tracking what you were saying, Governor Peterson, until you said, well, we will continue to do our business as usual, but we will also have heightened scrutiny regarding the activities we, and I, I think that's, and regarding the activities we would allow the sections to do.
Which begs the question, if we don't need to make any changes, then make no changes. But I am concerned that we backdoor making it more difficult for the sections and others to comment outside of WISBA to the legislature, for example, because of other concerns, which then really belies the point that there's nothing that's really changed. There is enough that's changed that people either need to know that yes, we have some concerns and considerations now, given a change in the landscape, or we don't. But we don't say both things. That's another reason why I think we need to do this. And as relates to the fiscal impact, and I may ask CFO Perez, but you know, I just ask, how much in unrestricted reserves do we have? And I just doubt, and I get real concern when we kind of start saying, oh, well, this may be one half of 1% of our current budget that we will add to do the work. And that's going to break the bank. One, it's not going to break the bank. And I would just hope we don't get to this point where, oh, well, let's you know, if it's not in the next eyebrow, we can't do anything. And I think that is a specious argument. But if we need to have an analysis, do that. But I guess, you know, I'm still in this corner of doing nothing is not the way to go, because actually we're doing other things that makes this harder for sections to speak. And I come from it from the Civil Rights Law section, where I'm very concerned about how much we will ratchet down and lock up the Civil Rights Law section from speaking on, on major issues of concern to that section.
Governor Dresden, sorry, I muted myself.
Oh, thank you, President Tolson. I'd like to call the question on Governor Higginson's motion. But I think Tara wants to speak first, so.
Well, I can hold my comments because I did have comments, but if you're going to call the question, I think those are out of line at this point. But one of my points that I had my hand up for was not to be too pedantic, but I wanted to also further clarify the motion. And I'm sure some of you have seen that there's usually a lot of debate after the meetings about what exactly the motion intended. And so one thing I want to be really, so I really want to be clear that it's all in there. One thing that's troubling me is the way it's worded. It says, after the Supreme Court has issued a decision in the McDonald Shell and Taylor cases. Does that mean we need a decision in all three cases? Is it a decision in any of the cases? I just want to clarify that.
Mr. President, should I, may I respond?
You're on mute, President Tolson.
Trying to be, you know, correct here. Yes, please, Governor Higginson.
All right, I, my, the intent of the motion was until after the Supreme Court has issued a decision on all three of the pending cases. But I, but I would, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I would like to be put back in the queue to speak because I'd like to amend my motion. If I should do that now or wait?
I think we have to decide whether, if we're calling the question, President Tolson.
Did someone second that motion?
My second.
You're still on mute, President Tolson.
I think somebody said, I think Governor
I did, I did, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so there's been a call, called a question, requires a two thirds vote. I'm remembering correctly, Mr. Parliamentarian.
You're correct. It's not debatable and requires a two thirds vote to be passed.
Okay, thank you very much. And by the way, I think it's a good idea to recognize that Governor Dresden has joined the meeting. Because I or was it, there was one governor who came in late and I don't know if I got him, I want to just make sure the executive director has. Oh, it was Governor Couch, okay. Just want to make sure that the executive director has that reflected in the meeting minutes. Okay.
I was here for roll call.
You're there. Yes, there was a roll.
So if someone's new, then it was not me.
Oh, you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I'd actually like to withdraw my motion.
Your original motion?
My, my original motion, I'd like to withdraw it. And I would like to offer an amended motion instead.
Then all of a sudden, we don't have a question to call, do we, Mr. Parliamentarian?
After the motion was made and has been stated, if we strictly follow the rules, which we haven't been all day, but not be withdrawn at this point, because there's already, it's been stated and put before the assembly and there's been debate upon it. So, but we, again, we've had a, the question has been called and seconded. There's no debate and it's time to vote on that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Parliamentarian.
Mr. President, just a point of order. At the last meeting, Governor Stevens had a motion to table and postpone indefinitely the consideration of the governance document, where we had lengthy and extensive debate, and then he withdrew the motion and no one raised an issue on that. I'm not saying we should not follow rubbers rules.
Sure. Had somebody called the question?
No, I don't think anyone had called the question on that.
Well, I think probably procedurally, procedurally, I'll check with our Parliamentarian again, but if, if the question is the call of the question motion and second is withdrawn, then maybe we can cut to the, cut to the other one.
I will withdraw my motion to call the question then, so we don't have to have a meaningless vote.
Governor San, is that acceptable to you?
That is acceptable. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we are back to you, Governor Higginson.
All right. So to confirm that I've withdrawn the motion that was pending, and I would like to make the following motion instead. I move that the current bar structure remain unchanged. And that we ask the members the question about whether they feel they are being served with the current structure. And if not, what is their suggestion for how to change it to better serve the members?
I'll second that. Executive Director, did you get that in your notes? Can you, can you read it back for everybody so they have it?
Governor Higginson moved that the current bar structure remain unchanged and that we ask the members the question about whether they feel they are being served by the current structure. And if not, what is their suggestion for how to change the structure to better serve the members?
Okay, everybody got the motion and there is a second. And I know this is slightly out of order again, but Nancy Hawkins, who is a a great contributor to these meetings, has had her hand up and I always like listening to her, so I'm going to ask her if she's got something she would say, like to say.
I think my first comment is I really should be taking Valium before some of these meetings. But, and I want to thank Alec for his comments in particular with regard to sections. So far today, you've heard from, I think it's four different sections, all saying they want more information. Sorry, my light keeps going out in my office. Because I have a box between me and the motion detector. So you have, I think, four sections tell you that they need more information and that part of your process should be to get more information to sections. I think we all know what would happen if this motion passed and we simply sent out a question to the membership. Is the, is this current structure, you know, meeting your needs? What would you like to see different? We've had, what, three years of listing tours? We know exactly what they're going to say. The same thing they said in, that was reflected in Hunter's Minority Report to the structure work group a couple of years ago. Too Seattle, too much Seattle, too Seattle centered. We know it from the Long Range Planning Committee. So they're going to come back with a bunch of things that have nothing to do with structure. They have to do with the issues before the Long Range Planning Committee. What are we going to do when our lease is up? Where are we going to go? Can we expand our work to meet more needs of rural lawyers, et cetera? We don't need another solicitation of the membership to know that those issues are out there, but they have nothing to do with structure. Alec made the point and exactly right that you can't have it both ways. You can't say, don't make any changes to the structure, but we're still going to be watching what you do. Because that's what's been happening and it's not fair to the work we do. And we need to provide information to our sections, but we need to develop it first. And so far, the only thing that's been developed is the roadmap for how we would lose in any lawsuit in the future. Where is the memo that the legislative work we do is carefully considered? And is germane to our work? Where is the memo that our diversity, equity and inclusion work is germane to this organization? That it meets the needs of the public, the judiciary and our members? Where is the memo that describes how careful we are with our Keller deduction? And, and how we stand behind, not this year's, because it included topics that should have been considered germane without reservation. But that our Keller deductions are determined fairly accurately and would hold up to any audit or scrutiny. That's the information we need to be putting together. That needs to be part of the first two months of this process. This is supposed to be a meeting about process. It is not supposed to be a meeting to say to Justice Gonzalez in the Washington Supreme Court, F you when your three questions, we're going to ignore them. Now, I don't know how it turned around that somehow the Supreme Court asked those questions. It seemed to happen after some presentations to the court, but now we're there. Now we have those three questions to answer. So we need to answer them. But we need to have information. And if the Board of Governors or the staff cannot put together these kind of memos that I'm talking about, well, then sections are going to do them. Because this is important information for this organization to consider. We cannot be afraid of the important work that we're doing. We cannot be afraid to be proud of our legislative work, our diversity, equity and inclusion work, and our Keller deductions. And we've been operating out of fear for years. When I first got involved coming to meetings, it was, oh, my God, Janice is going to be the death of us. Oh, my God, you know, look at the Keller case. Oh, my God. Well, so now there's some more cases. We're doing the same thing, year after year after year. We don't need a contingency plan for what if we lose. We need a contingency plan on how we can win. That's what lawyers do. We prepare our cases to try and win. We need to be proud of what we do. We need to put it down on paper. We need to convince first ourselves that we're right. And then, and then take it to our members and be prepared to take it to whatever court we would need to take it to. And starting with the Washington Supreme Court.
Governor Boyd followed by Governor Williams-Ruth.
Thank you, President. I put my hand back up because I thought we were going to call the question. And then I have a motion after this, after that motion, but I guess we're on to the second motion. I don't have any other specific comments on the second motion, except for the comments I had last, the last time. I do not think that this motion is a substantive response to the court's request that they made of us, have been making of us, and then reiterated to us today. So I'd urge this body to vote no.
Governor Williams-Ruth.
As I've been touring around, talking with my liaison ships, I posed the question regarding the fiscal responsibility, which is part of our jobs as governors, as to whether they would want us to be drawing the lawsuit where we would win and have those arguments that Ms. Hawkins is saying that we need to have in memo form to have. Because that is been front and center is part of this question is, is it fiscally responsible? If we double down and just bull ride ahead as if nothing has changed in the legal world in this country in the last three to four years? And then what would that cost be worth as we have that battle all the way to the United States Supreme Court? The, when presented with that question and if just straight out asked, would that be a good use of member funds to us to engage in that level of advocacy to fight forward? And it was very interesting comments and it was evenly split. And so it's, it's not that the, the things that have been requested don't exist or the comments haven't been had and the argument's not made. The reality is, do we want the next Keller to be John Doe versus the Washington State Bar Association? Is that what we're looking to do? And so as we go forward and as we decide a process, that is something that's always in the back of my mind as to wondering what is going to be, you know, the, the best in the air quotations? And then what's also going to be fulfilling our fiduciary duty to our members? And so it's, it's one of these things where I still disagree with the, the motion as it is right now. I believe that we have been given a charge of three questions and I believe our, the present motion is still too narrow for what we've been asked to do. So I will be voting no and encourage others to follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor Williams-Ruth. Did somebody else have their hand raised? Executive Director Nevet. The reason I can't, the reason I can't see your little hand up is because it blends in with some background lighting on your screen. That's why I don't see it. So thank you for raising your hand.
Thank you. Good to know. Two points. I wanted to speak to the fiscal piece. And we do have, so the board does have a policy called Board of Governors Policy Regarding Requests for Action. It does say that the board should not approve proposals that are going to impact the budget or require budget amendment without having that information, without having that information in front of them. It's not, it's a should, it's not a must or a shall, but what I wanted to suggest in terms of a path forward is we are going to need a little more detail in terms of how long is this going to take? Are these in-person meetings? Are they all-day meetings that need meals? Are they going to be virtual? You know, so if we can get some of those details, we could bring that information back possibly even to the January meeting, which is just a few weeks away at this point. And so we could maybe approve whatever we approve and then sort of come back for the fiscal piece. So I wanted to put that out there. The other thing I wanted to flag is one of the things I very clearly heard the chief say more than once was that we also need to consider how we best serve the public. And I don't think we've talked yet about how we are going to answer that. And I don't think we've talked yet about how we are going to answer that question. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that is also a part of the discussion.
Any more hands up that want to speak to the motion that's before the body? I'm not seeing other, any other hands up, so I think we're ready to vote on the motion. That will check in. Executive Director, do you see any hands up?
I do not.
Okay. Right, um, Executive Director Nevitt, if you could, once again, read the motion for the governors.
Governor Higginson moved that the current bar structure remain unchanged and that we ask the members the question about whether they feel they are being served by the current structure. And if not, what is their suggestion for how to change the structure to better serve the members?
Okay, ready to vote? Governor Abell.
No.
Uh, Governor Adwali. I don't believe he's here. Governor Angivell.
No.
Governor Boyd.
No.
Governor Clark. Governor Couch.
No.
Governor Dresden.
No.
Governor Higginson.
Aye.
Governor McBride.
No.
Governor Peterson.
Yes.
Governor Kurtser.
Yes.
Governor Siani.
Nay.
Governor Stevens.
No.
Governor Williams Ruth.
No.
Uh, any abstentions? I don't believe so. I've got I've got three yeses, nine no. Is that what you have, Executive Director Nevitt?
Yes, and I did not get a vote from Governor Clark. Same with you.
No vote from Governor Clark. He texted that he had to leave on an emergency basis and hopes to log back in later.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just need to let you know that I've got to step away from meeting for a while. I've got a client that's calling me. I've got to take this call, so I'll return as soon as I can.
Thank you, Governor Higginson. Okay, so uh, we are back to either a general discussion or um, frankly, uh, the proposal that uh, past President Chiketti has put on the table um, might with some fine tuning be um, a path forward to. Um, I don't know if Governor, or excuse me, former Governor, past President, former President Chiketti would like to uh, elaborate a little bit more. The question I have is, is how can we, I mean, seems like we'd have to put some timelines on the on the different components in your proposal so that we don't have just, I don't, I didn't see any timelines on your proposal, even though you used a uh, what a lot of construction companies use, project management type style stuff. Governor Stevens.
Yes, I, I, my point of order is, I think this would make more sense if we actually have a motion to speak to.
Okay, well, Governor Chiketti can't make motion. Neither can I. I'd be happy to entertain a motion if you have one, Governor Stevens.
I do, and my motion is that we um, move to approve the Chiketti proposal.
Excuse me, point of order, um, Governor Boyd was in the queue.
I'm sorry. Can, can we defer on getting a second on your motion there, Governor Stevens? So I'm sorry about that.
Absolutely. I'll even take it down and then you can come back to me. Sorry, Governor Williams Ruth. Sorry, Governor Boyd.
That's certainly okay. Thank you. Um, I was going to make a very similar motion, so I think our uh, goals are going to be accomplished. Uh, I would move that we adopt uh, past President Chiketti's proposal with the following changes um, in response to the discussions we've been having today. One, um, that we include that we continue to act as we have um, in the meantime. Two, that our work be completed by August thirtieth of um, two thousand twenty-two. And three, that we have no less than two hybrid meetings specifically set um, for the purpose of the bog interacting with the public, with the members, and with various entities, including but not limited to sections and minority bar associations.
I second Governor Boyd's motion.
Okay, you have a motion in a second. Does anybody need to have the motion re- restated at this point before we get into discussion? Uh, did you want to speak to the motion, Governor Boyd? Uh, or are you just uh?
Uh, no, thank you for that opportunity. I think that um, past President Chiketti has spoken to it. I would um, defer to him if he wants to speak to it more. I think that my comments in response to the earlier motion that was proposed also uh, pertain to this motion. I do think that it is responsive to the court's request of us. And I think it's our duty as governors at this point to um, reanalyze our structure and to come up with contingency plans. And it would, it would be prudent for us to take this action.
Okay, I have a question I'm just going to throw out to the governors. I didn't see any timelines on any of this uh, now in the motion, there is a timeline, but uh, the way I saw uh, past President Chiketti's proposal was he had kind of like three distinct um pockets of process, so to speak. And I didn't see any timelines in each one of those pockets of process. And I didn't know if that was something that the governors wanted to make more certain or if they just want to I don't know how to, how to phrase it, whether they wanted to make the pockets of the process more certain or whether they just wanted to uh, kind of try and do them all at once, um, which seemed to be the way that um, the, the the project management, project creator seems to got it up there. Uh, I see Governor McBride's got his hand up, followed by past President Chiketti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd just like to speak in favor of Governor Boyd's motion and point out that uh, the Chief Justice did specifically ask us to look at what's an optimal bar structure, not just what's legally required. The task force two years ago did not answer those questions. They specifically said we didn't look at those questions. Um, I think the first two questions, we won't be legally compelled to do anything. Uh, so let's spend our time talking about if we want to do something. I would like to see a different structure with the bar. Um, uh, members in my district support that as well. Um, we constantly look to how to get around General Rule twelve in our comments. A structure would allow us to be more open in doing that. I, I, I'm not afraid the membership is going to leave. Um, I like what California's done. My little brother practices down there. They now have a, a voluntary uh, California Bar Association, California Lawyers Association. And so I'd like us to look at that in this process. And just for my fellow governors to know, I'm going to be advocating for a change, not driven by legality, uh, not driven by fear, but because I think it's better. I think we can have a better process. We try to work around our structure all the time. How about not being good at working around it? Why don't we just restructure it the way we want it? So I'll vote for the motion.
Uh, I think we have past President Chiketti in the, in the queue next, followed by Governor Stevens. And then I see uh, the Chair of the Practice of Law Board is here. Michael Cherry, who might want to chime in on this as well, since the Bar Association administers and funds the Practice of Law Board. Governor, House President, former.
How many titles?
Kenny, all those titles. I don't know.
So many titles. Uh, the um, the Governor Boyd's uh, motion is well taken and improvements, I think, to my proposal and I support them. Um, I may disagree with my esteemed colleague from uh, Olympia and former North uh, Central graduate um, in advocating for a um, uh, bifurcated bar. Um, but that's going to come after we start um, our process. Uh, my point was just to put the roadmap in place. I think that our integrated bar, um, you should, you know, history buff that I am, I know that in the nineteen thirties, early nineteen thirties, California went to a mandatory bar. We followed suit. And uh, I kind of think that we want to depart with our friends to the South. Um, we heard in the Structures Work Group of the many difficulties California and other bars are experiencing, not the least of which is increased fees for both the, the mandatory side and the voluntary side. So it will be more expensive. At least that's what they've incurred down in California. It's looking that way. Um, so there's obstacles. I think that uh, the integrated bar does not have the duplication of um, many of the things that they have to do down in California. Um, so I'll be advocating differently unless something happens during this process that uh, that changes my mind and that's part of this. We, we really need to look at this. We really need to take a, a second look at this. Um, the court is concerned about it. I'm concerned about it. I wasn't concerned about it coming out of the Structures Work Group. But um, you know, we're seeing changes now. We're seeing things much differently than back then. Um, so I support the changes that Governor Boyd uh, proposes. Um, there can be some more detail for our roadmap, um, but we need to figure that out. Otherwise, we're just going to do this. So you know, at our first meeting, we need to figure out what those phases are. I relied on Chief Selvage, who um, put the process of um, planning, scheduling in. She um, came up with this uh, this uh, plan and, and schedule. Um, we need to fill that in. Uh, I think it's a good structure for moving forward and figuring out what we want to do and when. Um, there's a lot of people we need to hear from and two meetings may not even be enough for uh, listening to the public and, and uh, uh, all impacted um, categories of folks. Um, and, and I liked a lot of the idea at least to, because there, there could and possibly should be more. Um, but it, it, this is, it's an outline of a process. Um, I think we adopt the, the process and then we may move forward on tweaking it and, and developing it so that we're all on board, we're all on the same page and we're all, we all have buy-in. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think Governor uh, Stevens is next.
Thank you. I'm uh, certainly going to urge uh, my colleagues. I'm going to vote for this proposal and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Um, and my hope would be that um, uh, you know, one, I think this is the first step that we actually have a, a go proposal that we actually move forward with this. And my hope would be that with the goal proposal um, that uh, the past president uh, can uh, work with the Executive Director and we can fill some of those gaps and have kind of more details hopefully at next month's meeting that deals with fiscal issues, that deals with even a, a, a more laid out timeline. But at least we have a go in a way that then uh, the past president and others aren't kind of wasting their time because we have never even said, yes, we're going to go and do this. So uh, thanks uh, uh, President Chiketti, Governor Boyd, and Governor Williams Ruth.
Um, I think we have next uh, well, I'm gonna, I'm not ignoring you uh, Chair Michael Cherry, but I'd like to get the comments from the governors first, so we're going to go with Governor Angivell, Governor Williams Ruth, followed by uh, Chair Michael Cherry, followed by, oh, I think we've got um, Chief Disciplinary Counsel Indy. Thank you.
Um, I wanted to call to question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so uh, we have uh, got to do that first, no debate, two-thirds vote. Governor Abell.
Aye.
Governor Adwali. Governor Angivell.
Aye.
Governor Boyd.
Aye.
Governor Clark. Governor Couch.
Aye.
Governor Dresden.
Aye.
Governor Higginson. Governor McBride. Governor Peterson.
No.
Governor Kurtser.
Aye.
Governor Siani.
Aye.
Governor Stevens.
Aye.
Governor Williams Ruth.
No.
I think I have eight yeses, two no's, and uh, four not voting. Is that what you have, Executive Director Nevitt?
Yes.
Is that the, I think that's a two-thirds vote.
I think that's eighty percent.
Okay, so um, that means we move on to uh, the motion. Uh, Executive Director, could you go ahead and restate it so the governors have it in mind?
Yes, and Governor Boyd, let me know if I've captured anything incorrectly. Governor Boyd moved to adopt past President Chiketti's proposal with the following changes. One, we include that we continue to act as we have been in the meantime. Two, that our work be completed by August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Three, that we have no less than two hybrid meetings specifically set for the Board of Governors to interact with the members and the public, including but not limited to sections and minority bar associations.
Everybody understand the motion? Okay, we're going to vote. Uh, Governor Abell.
Aye.
Governor Adwali. Governor Angivell.
Aye.
Governor Boyd.
Aye.
Governor Clark. Governor Couch.
Aye.
Governor Dresden.
Aye.
Governor Higginson. Governor McBride.
Aye.
Governor Peterson.
Yes.
Governor Kurtser.
Aye.
Governor Siani.
Aye.
Governor Stevens.
Aye.
Governor Williams Ruth.
Aye.
I have eleven yeses, no, zero, zero no votes. And uh, three not voting. Is that what you have, Executive Director Nevitt?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, well, that was the thing on the table today was uh, get a process. We have now adopted a process. It's got some when I was in law school, I had a uh, constitutional law professor who referred to uh, certain things that the US constitutional law professor who referred to certain things that the US Supreme Court was doing is the Swiss cheese doctrine. Where the administrative agencies had to fill in the holes in the process because the statutes passed by the Congress didn't have all the fine print. And they apparently, if I remember my constitutional law correctly, said that's okay with a proper delegation. So there's some Swiss cheese doctrine stuff that has to be applied here on this one. And before we adjourn, I would really like to hear from some people that have their hands up just to make sure that we got that. But my feeling is I'm gonna be working with past President Chiketti and others who are interested to make sure that we have some more definite timelines. And then we have to figure out which meetings and where and when and all that, because the president's supposed to be calling the meeting. So there'll be some background work and what we'll probably do is that the January meeting give you the kind of tentative outline, what we've kind of come up with. But I don't think, you know, I was going for six meetings this year just as a way to save money and things like that. Well, I don't think that's gonna happen now. But especially if we're gonna have some hybrid meetings where we wanna ask members of the public to come and show up. And obviously section folks to come and show up and other, you know, interested people, including you know, there's one group we haven't heard one from and they're now members of the public and it would be interesting if we to get them to come. And that's the people that have voluntarily resigned from our association. I do get anecdotal evidence about that kind of stuff because they're my age group. But they just come up and say, oh, there's nothing there for me anymore. I don't want to be part of this. I don't want to pay the five hundred or the two hundred or anything. I just, there's nothing there for me anymore. And these are people who spent thirty plus years of their adult lives as lawyers. And now they are gone. And you just wonder, is that something we ought to think about? Hearing from, so we can get, I mean, they're kind of like the dissatisfied customers who don't go back and buy the same brand of car because they just didn't feel like it was necessary to make that mistake twice. So I wouldn't even mind seeing if we can figure out, you know, because they're all on that. They had database of voluntarily resigned. I wouldn't mind thinking about reaching out to them and find out why they quit and said, hey, I don't want to be part of this anymore. There's nothing there for me. So something to think about. Okay, so I've got some hands up and I would like before we adjourn to make sure we as part of the Swiss cheese doctor, get some of that information out there. So I think we're gonna start with President of the Board, of the Practical Law Board, Michael Cherry.
Thank you, President Tolleson. I'm just really concerned listening to discussions today. I guess I feel a little bit like Nancy Hawkins today. I've been trying to participate and participate in a timely manner. And wish I could have spoken before the question got called. However, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to give it at this time, given the rules of order and everything else. But let me just say, I'm very concerned that I didn't hear much discussion about the six public or the six court-created boards that are administered by WSBA in this discussion today. And we will be severely impacted by any change to the structure of the bar, whether it comes voluntarily or is forced upon us. If you're really trying to create the best possible structure you can have and fight for it, then you need to involve the boards. And remember, we are an extremely strange entity. I don't even like to use the word entity to describe us because we are not a corporation or a nonprofit. The court in its wisdom chose to associate us with the Washington State Bar Association rather than the Administrative Office of the Court. We're working very hard with the Taxi Cab Committee to try to define what it means to be a board administered by a bar association when the court orders creating both the boards and the bar association, a rather loosely defined administer. So I ask you to please keep in mind that we're there. We should be included in this. More importantly than even your own sections, as important as sections are, sections are a creation of your own work. I'm very disturbed by the discussions today and not hearing the boards being brought into this. And I'll just leave it at that. This will affect my thinking about Taxi Cab. I must say that out loud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We got Governor Williams Ruth, followed by Chief Disciplinary Counsel Douglas Indy.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, and then we got Governor Stevens too. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to speak as the incoming chair of the Board Legislative Committee and what I am going to be interpreting the continuing to operate business as we have been. And that is to say that if a section brings forth a proposal and they have conducted the appropriate GR twelve point two analysis, we will be pushing that forward with the committee and going forward and not reliving the hashing out that happened in October. So this is something that I spoke to President Tolleson about when I was interviewing for this role and saying that I would be honoring the board's directive and wishes on this policy. And I hope that we can put a marker in history books right now that if there's anything that needs to come to the board, that people are not going to reopen and say, oh, no, that's not what we meant. And that's what I would have said before the vote. So I sure hope that when people are voting for us to continue business as usual, that that's what it means for me as the BLC Chair, that for the civil rights section, for world peace through law, through family law, through corporate, for the animal law section, I don't care. If somebody is gonna come to us and they have done their work and they say we've done so and it's passed the GR twelve point two muster that they have to do, then I, as Chair, will give them that space to present it to the BLC. So if anyone wants to come back and make a motion to change what that means, please speak so now. Otherwise, that's how we are going to go forward, starting on January seventh for our first Friday meeting. Thank you, Mr. President, for the time.
Thank you, Governor Williams Ruth. Chief Disciplinary Counsel Indy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chair Michael Cherry and I are on the same page today. Maybe we're on opposite sides, but it's of the same page. I was pleased to see in stakeholders being fleshed out to include expressly include the public. Some of the outreach that the stakeholder outreach will include the public. Now, it is notoriously difficult. And I've been watched this phenomenon for twenty-five years. It's notoriously difficult to get the public, whatever that means, to come before the board or to comment on initiatives of the board. Now, maybe this will be different. Maybe there will be a ground swell of enthusiasm for this project and the public will swarm these meetings. And you'll hear from the public, but I don't think so. And historically, certain entities, individuals and entities have served as surrogates for the voice of the public to fill that empty chair. And typically, that is the regulatory staff and regulatory volunteers. And a number of the Supreme Court boards are regulatory boards. So I urge you to remember what an integrated bar is. To remember what happened in nineteen thirty-three when the Washington State Bar Association, a voluntary bar association, asked for and was given by the legislature authority to collect dues or licensing fees from every lawyer in order to be a member of the association and in order to practice law. And the quid pro quo for that was the bar association took the regulatory functions and paid for them. They used to be delivered by a legislative-created entity in collaboration with the Supreme Court, paid for by tax dollars from the general fund, but the bar association said, integrate this bar. We will pay for and administer the regulatory functions. That's what an integrated bar is. So please remember that the regulatory piece is part of this equation and ask and hear from those who are delivering the regulatory functions and those who are receiving the benefit of the regulatory functions, the purpose of which is protection of the public.
Thank you very much. I think we're up to Governor Boyd, followed by past President Chiketti. Oh, did I miss you again, Governor Stevens? Don't, I won't forget you. Were you next? Think you were next. Sorry. Governor Stevens.
Okay. Well, I see his video is turned off, but I just wanted to say to Michael Cherry, but as well to to Chief Ende, I want, I thank you both for your comments. In my context, actually, we didn't get, I didn't get into the court-appointed boards because I didn't think that's where the real trouble lay as it relates to the integrated bar. But that's because our court is in fact created you and then assigned us to work on that. Having said that, my view is, in fact, that we be as inclusive as possible. And so I want to thank you for making sure we don't forget where you are in this process, although again, I would say. But I will be interested in finding out the extent to which the whole issue of mandated association rights crossed in the path of, for example, your board and others. I didn't think they did. But we should look stem to stern. And so I thank you for your comment. And would of course ask the executive director as well as Chief Nagowski to help us make sure we are staying true to that in terms of looking from stem to stern at this question in terms of our entire association and how that works. The regulatory side, the Supreme Court boards, as well as sections and others. So thanks.
Thank you, Governor Boyd.
Thank you. My comments are, again, very similar to Governor Stevens' comments. Chair Cherry and Chief Ende, your comments are very well taken. Thank you for reminding us and continuing to remind us. I certainly did not mean to leave you out of my motion. I meant for my motion to be as inclusive as possible. I think that we need to be taking in comment from all the stakeholders in Washington State and certainly did not mean to leave you out. But I appreciate your comments and I appreciate that you are reminding us to remember you. And I apologize, I didn't enumerate the court-created boards or the regulatory functions in my motion. I certainly did mean to include you.
Thank you very much. See, Governor Stevens, do you have your hand? No. Past President Chiketti.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for giving my proposal due consideration and improving it, which I thankful for and appreciate. This is a concerted team effort and the only way this is gonna work if we all put our heads together and and get to work. And that means all of our heads. When I drafted the proposal, you know, I thought about the public, Chief Ende, because that's what I was told to me, what it should be included. We did have some members of the public in the structures work group. But it wasn't as robust as we would have liked. But still, I think that is a worthy goal to include folks from the public and then maybe we can find ways to do that. Also, access to justice is important and that was included. And as I was drafting it and then I thought, well, okay, and certainly our members. And then I thought, well, maybe members is too broad. We should talk about sections and and boards, of course, and then committees and then councils. And at the end, I was like, there's just, there's just, I'm gonna forget somebody and there's gonna be a a task force someplace that is going to want to be included. I didn't want to lose, so I used the word stakeholders, which I think reflects all of those folks. And I didn't mean to exclude the boards, Chair Cherry. And I hope this does not influence your participation or dedication to what we're doing with Taxi Cab, because I do think that is on the right direction. We're heading in a good direction there. It's for the improvement of relationships and for the improvement of the WSBA. And that's gonna pay off for all of us. Absolutely, the board should be involved in this and should be a part. And I have always enjoyed all of your input into any of the board's activities and Taxi Cab and all of the things that I've chaired. So I hope you will continue to do that, Chair Cherry. And I apologize if we didn't, we weren't too direct in naming who we want. We want all of these folks. And again, I appreciate everybody's support of this idea. It's, it's, it's gonna be a lot of work. It's gonna be a lot of meetings, many of which I think we need to do in person. I don't know how we connect with the sections and the boards and the committees and the public without, with like this because I don't know that we connect that well. So I hope that many, most of those meetings can be in person, perhaps here at the bar offices, where I'm sitting in a big empty room all by myself and kind of lonely. I'm looking forward to seeing all of you again together. So thank you.
Oh, do I see other hands up? No. Unusual silence. Executive Director Nevin, do you see any hands up? Did I miss anybody?
No.
Thank you for all these great comments. Probably gonna be, you know, we have these executive committee meetings and that's probably where our next steps are gonna get discussed. I was trying to limit them to two hours. Now I think they're gonna be back to three hours. So that, and those are, those are, you know, we broadcast those as far as letting people know that they're on the agenda and all that. So I think that's probably where we're gonna begin the discussion. Executive Director Nevin, the next executive committee meeting isn't until January. We don't have one in December, do we?
Right, we don't have one.
Yeah, and it's probably, you know, given the last half of December is usually a real busy time for for family and friends. It's unlikely we're gonna be able to schedule anything. So I think we're just gonna put it on the agenda for the executive committee meeting in January that we're gonna discuss next steps. That's probably the most logical step. Anything else for the good of the order before somebody makes a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, all those in favor of the motion, just raise your right hand or your virtual hand. All those opposed? Governor Clark, are you opposing the motion?
No, I'm sorry.
All those abstaining, raise your hands. Let's see. I saw eight in favor. Is that what you saw, Governor, Executive Director Nevin?
I didn't count, but I saw that it was unanimous.
It was pretty much unanimous, yep. Didn't see any no votes, didn't see any abstentions. So motion carried. Thank you all for being here today.
Mr. President, Shelley, Ms. Bynum has her hand up for a moment.
Oh, yes, please.
A quick comment. The next executive committee is February fourth.
We don't have one in January?
We do not.
Oh.
As you're planning the meetings, just keep that in mind. It is February fourth.
Oh, gosh, I think
Does something stop him from having a January meeting?
No, we can always get a different meeting.
We're gonna, we're gonna schedule one in January, obviously. Okay. So stay tuned for the notice on that one. Anybody else have anything? Anybody else have anything? No?
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays, everybody. We are adjourned.
Take care.